How are you today, Truva?
No.
Because it did flake a few more flakes, yeah. It flaked a little more. And then, of course, Friday night, Saturday, six to ten. Yeah. I'm thrilled because I have a meeting. Oh, the morning, Saturday morning. Wow. Which means, you know, I parked my, I parked my car literally at the end of the driveway and hope I could get out of the street.
Get out, yeah. I do that too, so they don't call you up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, until I don't minimize the amount I have to move before I go.
Right.
How are you today, Berica?
Good.
Good, good, good.
Uh, yeah. That was nice.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the March first, two thousand and twenty-three Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sony Deseran, a parent of some high school students, will share a few words with the board about holy. Welcome to our meeting, Sony. You can come right up front.
You got the, you got the mic, Brian, for the... No, just the microphone. We don't need the, uh... Yeah, Ken, can you grab it?
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Namaste. Sit around. I know I have been, uh, sorry, my name is Sony Deseran, and I'm from Schenectady, and I'm not a stranger to no one here, right? Yeah, no? So, I know we're calling the spot. I'm not the one should be talking here, but the priest, unfortunately, he couldn't make it at this time. So, whatever little I know, I'll be talk about. PAGWA. PAGWA is holy, is the festival of colors and love, peace, and unity. That's all we should share. And then, we have a lot of sweets, so I can just run a quickly piece, a song of PAGWA. I know I don't have music, but I will just sing a part of it. Everybody joyful on the day of the PAGWA. This is a holy holiday. Drum and dantal, chal and chautal. This is the music of the day. Drum and dantal, chal and chautal. This is the music of the day. Everybody joyful on the day of the PAGWA. This is the holy holiday. Modern water, beer and powder. This is the color of the day. Everybody joyful on the day of the PAGWA. This is the holy holiday. Love and happiness, peace and unity. This is the message of the day. Love and happiness, peace and unity. This is the message of the day. Everybody joyful on the day of the PAGWA. This is the holy holiday. So, everyone understand what is PAGWA wholly about, right? It's most based upon colors, love, happiness, peace, and unity. That's all we should live in this world here today. With no hesitation, we have the Tasa boys here with the drum. We'd like to welcome them. On stage, we have Ashen Angru.
Thank you.
It's a good-sized drum.
Thank you, Tasa drummers. Thank you. And our dancers will be next in a few minutes. Okay. So, our dancers will be Rashna and Rubini. Rashni, Rashni? Thank you.
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana.
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana.
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Upar, upar bangal ke yaunakariyon, kuch niche. Ose kuch na bol gayi, nee chum se sakhiya niche. Kuch ke par, sat jaane na paye. Jaaye to aapas, aane na paye. Zulmi ne jaise, baaj ho la jora. Ajega, ajega, chhichi na chora. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Ranga bura se, nee chum se bura. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se...
Angli se...
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana. Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana.
Na bula rasta.
Rastay pe aja.
Na thaamlo bhaiya.
Na chheedo saiyon.
Tum dil mat todho.
Tum aajre chhoro.
Tum kahay roti, huh?
Tum me churi roti.
Dil tere aadu ka.
Chada chada chhuta.
Tum naach me kahaun.
Tum bed me jaun.
Muskel hai janna.
Tu hai divana.
Mujhe angli lagaana.
Masang lagaana.
Nila ke pila.
Nila na pila.
Kyar raal ghulabi?
Tu bol ghaabi. Chutne ki chale, sihna ko laa. Isse ki baahon se chala.
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana.
Angli se angli lagaana, sajana hamme aise ram lagaana.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we want to say thank you, thank you, and the, um, students that presented today. They are former high school students as well as current high school students. So, we have alumnis here as well. So, thank you so much. We really enjoyed it. Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening with the addition of Resolution eleven A. Motion? So moved. Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vivian. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of February first, two thousand and twenty-three, Board of Education meetings are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Prinsilla. Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Mm-hmm. Any additions? Corrections? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Privilege of the floor. Do we have any people who just arrived, who have not signed in on the, in the assignment sheet and want to speak now? Members of the public? Nope?
So, good evening again. We are about to convene in the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment meeting period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if needed. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at appropriate time. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that we, you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose to do so. The board will now welcome public comments. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes to individually. Um, the individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Our first person will be Julius Miranda. Miranda? Welcome, Julius.
Brian, is the microphone still up there? Okay.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Soler. I am Julius Miranda. I am a junior at Schenectady High School. And this evening, I want to share my experience working at STEAM Camp last week. My experience working at the STEAM Camp was, um... It was eye-opening because I got to work with kids. And the STEAM Camp also took place at Hamilton, which is where I used to go to during my elementary years. I, um, I enjoyed working with the kids because we did hands-on projects and I, me personally, I enjoy hands-on things. That's where I usually shine, that's my personality. I also am a very social person. I love talking to people, I love working with people. And I view this STEAM Camp opportunity as a opportunity for me to get some job experience for the future when I go to apply for my dream job of being a state trooper. I also, um... I don't know, I'm kind of...
It's okay, you can take your time, that's okay, that's all right. It happens to all of us.
Yeah, I'm, I had a really fun experience. I loved working with the kids. They love working with me. I built great relationships with them and some of the teachers. Um, I also, there was a couple incidents with some kids where just a little bit of drama. Um, I, um, I felt a connection because I went one-on-one with them. I had a great connection with them and that, just having that connection kind of just, I wish that as a younger kid, I had someone that I could look up to, that would have that one-on-one and share that same connection with me. So, I'm glad I was in the, that position to share with that, some of the kids. And I thought I made a great impact on them. I thought they made a great impact on me because I'm going to take, um, I'm going to take the STEAM Camp job experience and I'm going to apply that in the future. I would also like to thank, um, Dr. Coto for giving me the opportunity to work at STEAM Camp last week. I'm also grateful that he allowed me to work at Hamilton, a school that I used to go to. Thank you, board members, for coming this evening and thank you for hearing my speech.
Thank you so much, Julius. Thank you. And our next person is Shane Foss. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, board superintendent. As stated, my name is Shane Foss. Um, I was a lunch monitor and now currently a parent liaison for the Schenectady School District. Um, over the winter break, I worked as a, um, non, as a teacher for the STEAM Camp program, which, which I felt provides an awesome opportunity for our students and children to experience a little bit of fun during school in the winter and spring, uh, breaks. And also, not to mention, it's free to cost to our families. Um, not only does the program provide the basics of a regular school week, transportation, breakfast, lunches, it also grants our students access to all types of projects and experiments that encourage teamwork as well as individual creativity. From baking soda and vinegar volcanoes, Mentos and soda experiments, to yarn weaving and small structure building and testing. Students and staff alike enjoyed what the STEAM Camp was able to provide for us. Winter and spring breaks bring full, um, being full weeks off can provide an obstacle for some of our families to find daycare providers or, um, anybody to watch their children. And I feel that this program has provided a solution, or at the very least, an option for set families to have something to do during that time. Uh, it allows our students a place to learn, have fun, be safe while allowing the families to continue their work weeks without, um, any complication or worry as they would during a nor, normal school week. Like any, um, actually, being able to work with our students and staff from other buildings in the district gave both student and staff ways to, for us to meet, communicate, and bring our schools that much closer as, as a community. We were able to work with other students, other staff that we might not have met in any other way. Um, I know the students that I personally worked with enjoyed themselves and we're looking forward to coming back in the springtime for the April STEAM Camp. Um, with that said, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for allowing the implement, implementation of the STEAM Camp and allowing us, um, somebody like me to be able to step into a position that I never would have before and experience something new. So, with that said, um, I know that I'm looking forward to it and so are the, the kids that are all looking forward to April and springtime. Seems it'll probably be that much better.
Thank you. And our next person is Julia Brisbane. Welcome, good evening.
I'm just gonna, I timed myself, so I'm ready for everybody, so I'm gonna keep my phone out if that's all right. And I don't think I'm gonna need the mic. Does anybody need the mic? No? Great.
Oh, for the video, okay, sorry. I might be really loud then, sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Julia Brisbane. I am a sixth grade teacher at Central Park, and up until January, I had three children enrolled in the district. It would be absolutely impossible for me to quantify the pain this school district has caused my family and I. In fact, my son has been diagnosed with anxiety as the result of the interaction between he and his pre-K teacher, where the teacher told him, "Boys who don't follow directions go to jail." He's biracial. When he began to cry and asked for a hug, she refused, taking out her phone and filming him. When this incident happened, the school was not responsive in protecting my son from his teacher. It took weeks to resolve, and I no longer felt my children were safe in school. That was pre-K. In kindergarten, the school sent a letter home in October that my son had scored the lowest possible score on the Dial Four, the assessment used to determine intervention placements in kindergarten and required legally by New York State. Not only were they not providing interventions, even though he had the lowest possible score, but when I expressed concern about the validity of the test, having given it myself, I was reassured that, in fact, it was correct. I was reassured he did not need intervention, which was nonsensical and illegal based on the result of the Dial Four. Excuse me. After twelve weeks of the district ignoring me, we discovered the tests were given incorrectly, and every kindergartner at Zaller had to be retested. This meant that more than a dozen kids at Zaller did not receive early intervention services for the first twelve weeks of kindergarten. My son's behavior started to get worse that year. I created intervention plans, behavior is my specialty, which were not implemented, and I was constantly called into the building, forcing to leave, thank you, forcing to leave my students at Central Park who are behind and cannot afford to miss out on their teacher. And my son was suspended several times without reporting it to the state or even to the administrators in the district, which are both legal requirements. Then, I brought him to the doctor, who explained to me that the reason he's having these behaviors is because of the environment, not him. She believed that if I removed him from the school, it would be immediately better. Where was I to put him? I support three children on a teacher's salary and cannot provide tuition for a public school or a private school. The last straw was this September, when the district started to push to place him in a 611, a room where kids are constantly restrained, a room where no child is on grade level, whereas my gym is reading four grades ahead. I'm sorry. This is a room that simply should not exist in education. I said no, his issue was behavioral and not academic. He needed behavioral supports within the building. When I requested the RTI data, which is legal data required to place a child in a special education program, they refused, Dr. Deriz refused. I got an email the night before winter vacation, two days before Christmas, that they were removing my son regardless of my opinion, the Thursday following break. I had already been reaching out to the district, including the superintendent, for months at this point in an, in an attempt to work with anyone else. In order to get anyone to return an email, I had to email our president, Bernice. When I refused to sign again, they just started suspending him for anxiety attacks. He's seven. I pulled him from the district as well as my other two children. Wasn't everyone shocked at the new school when they met him? It took forty-eight hours for his behavior to be resolved. What's the difference, you ask? A team of people at Destin Prep who care more about children learning than getting them out of their hair. A team who believes in respecting children and encouraging them rather than treating kids with no respect or care. A team who doesn't make decisions about a child without the family giving input. A team who believes that every child deserves a high-quality education. And in our first report card conference, his new teacher said to me, "I have no idea what they were doing to him." He's incredible. And yet, I have spent so many sleepless nights writing emails to Schenectady, looking for help, and no one helped, except for Bernice, thank you. They were unwilling to provide what is legally mandated by the state. And when I requested these materials I have the legal right to, I was ignored. I wanted to speak to you today because I see this happening as a trend in our district, as I'm a teacher here. It's not just my son. Children are constantly being wrongly placed, and it affects the rest of their life. The problem being, most parents don't have the privilege to have a master's in education and don't know that the district is not only lying to them but breaking the law. I see this happening every day. Our school district treats our families as if we aren't capable of raising them. They treat us like we don't know what's best for our children, whether you have a master's degree in education or not. I don't want anyone in this community to feel that way again. So, I encourage you to sign your children K first and second up for Destin Prep, a free charter in downtown Schenectady. They'll be treated as human beings who are important and valuable. Schenectady, on the other hand, will do anything it can to gaslight, ignore, and make it seem like you are the problem. They will spend weeks, months not calling you back and make excuses about it. I know not all of you have students in primary grades. I know that many people don't have the privilege I did to pick up and change schools. Please feel free to contact me anytime. My email is julia dowling, D-O-W-L-I-N-G, at live.com, and nothing would make me happier than to support one child to be successful here. Tomorrow will be my last day teaching here, as I can no longer work for a district that does not prioritize our neediest children. However, I will never give up on our kids and our community. Someone has to speak for them if the district won't. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will move to our superintendent comments.
Can you turn off the microphone?
Uh, Brian, you wanna bring up the slide that? So, good evening, uh, board members, community, uh, those in attendance, staff, families. Uh, I have, um, just go full screen there, yep. I have, uh, just some, some comments tonight, um, trying to, uh, be as cumulative as possible, uh, as factual as possible, um, but also recognizing that, you know, as a, as a district, we've had, uh, a tragedy in this, in this community that, um, that I do not want to overlook or, uh, forget. Uh, Brian, can you go three slides over? Thanks. Uh, as a school community, we, we continue to gro- grieve the loss of Samantha Humphrey. Uh, her life was taken away way too soon and she's, uh, will be dearly missed. Uh, we offer our sympathy, our, and prayers to Samantha, thanks, to Samantha's loved ones during this difficult time. It has been a difficult week for the high school campus, um, and, um, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with them. I'm proud of the staff and the students who continue to pull together to support one another during, uh, these challenging times. And so, um, before I ask for a moment of silence, I also wanna, um, share that we, we lost another person tragically today, uh, as part of our Schenectady community. And, um, I also wanna take a moment to read, um, something that was sent by the union president, um, this afternoon. It's not, it's not going, Brian, so I don't know. Go back one. Oh, there, there, you didn't, um, can you go to the share the slide? It's, uh, it got updated and I think you're missing one slide. Uh, while I read this statement, I want the community to know that today we lost a teacher, we lost a staff member tragically. Uh, the teacher's name was Mary Hafa and she was a 20-year teacher here in Schenectady. Uh, there's a, a visual of her that I think is important to have a face to a name. Mary was with us for, uh, 20 years and was an active, uh, member of our high school community, but I do wanna read this letter from union president Michael Silvestri for the teachers' union. "Good evening Superintendent Soler and members of the Board of Education. First, I apologize for not being with you in person this evening, although I'm not completely sure I would have been able to get through this statement if I was there. I'd also like to express my gratitude for allowing the statement to be read onto the record outside of regular order. It was with great sadness and a heavy heart that I write these words about our beloved union sister Mary Hafa on the day of her passing. A science teacher at Schenectady High School, Mary was smart, lovely, and a kind woman. So smart in fact that I learned today that she was the one person that everybody would want to be on her trivia team. While I did not personally know Mary, what I can tell you even from our limited interactions over the years, she always exuded a warmth that left you with a smile on your face. In a building already dealing with tragic passing of our student Samantha Humphrey, we will now have to carry on without one of our own. While it will be difficult, we have risen to these challenges before and we come together as a family that we are. I wanna thank Principal Green, Superintendent Soler, and all the admin who came together in the high school auditorium this afternoon when the staff was informed that Mary's passing was imminent. It truly exemplified the idea that we are better together. Finally, I also need to acknowledge all of my union sisters and brothers, especially those in the science department at Schenectady High School, who have rallied around Mary throughout her illness. While I'm not surprised at their outpouring in warmth and their generosity of their colony, nonetheless, I am inspired by it. Thank you, President Mike Silvestri, Schenectady Federation Teachers President. And so if the board and those in attendance would join me for a moment of silence, not only for Samantha, but also for Mary Hafa." Thank you. I will say before I move on to some of my other comments, um, there is a service scheduled for Samantha Humphrey this Saturday, March 4th, at the Daily Funeral Home on 242 McClellan Street at Schenectady. It will start promptly at 2:00 PM, followed by visitation until 4:00 PM. And we will, uh, include some information in my weekly brief as well, uh, regarding, uh, both the passing of Samantha and, um, our, uh, science teacher Mary Hafa. So I'm gonna try to move on to some other information, uh, if I can. First, it's not going right yet. I'll be, okay, I think I got it now. You can go back one. Uh, before I get into an update on our Schenectady Revitalization Plan 2030, I do wanna share some other, uh, important information for the board and for the community to know that, um, that we'll be hosting a Schenectady Promise event. We, we're calling it Schenectady Promise 2.0 with SUNY Schenectady. We also have a new partner coming on board and that event will take place on March 15th. If those of you do not recall, that is, that was our commitment as a community to, uh, instantly admit all of our graduating seniors into SUNY Schenectady. Uh, and last year, uh, I think we had about 70 individuals that took advantage of that, uh, who previously had no plans at all. We will share more on that information, but I'm excited and grateful because we're calling it 2.0 for a reason. There is more to the, uh, promise and, uh, more to come on that in the next couple of weeks. Prior to winter recess, uh, we had some of our My Brothers Keeper fellows, uh, participate in the New York State My Brothers Keeper Workshop in Albany. Two of our students, Jonathan James and Ca- Kajir Morton, delivered speeches to a large captive audience. They did a fantastic job sharing their My Brothers Keeper stories. The fellows also attended the New York State Association of Black and Puerto Rican Legislators Youth Conference. I wanna thank, uh, uh, our MBK fellows for giving up their weekend, um, to be a part of this. I'm sure that will, this will live with them forever. I also wanna uplift, uh, Brian Ledbetter, who is our, um, who does the work, leads the work in the district along with Dr. Coto and many individuals in his division, uh, who lead this. So thank you, Dr. Coto. Um, thi- this was really powerful. There's some pictures we'll be posting online, we'll include, th- this was a group of young men of color across the state that came together. Um, it was really, really, really powerful experience for our young men. I also wanna thank though, two of their mentors that served the fellows. One of them is Jason Benitez, the Vice President of the Capital Region Chamber of Commerce, and our, uh, very own Carl Williams for the Schenectady City Council member, who they all stepped up and they serve as role models and mentors to both Jonathan and Ca- and Kajir. We know it's important for our young people to be inspired and mentored and we're grateful for them for taking this role in the work and making a difference in our students. I think the board heard tonight some testimonials on STEAM camp. I will say it is a monumental lift for our district. And just to give you some points, and we'll, we'll include some, some data in the weekly brief and, and share some updates, but we had over 350 kids attend every day. Uh, we were impacted by rain, sleet, ice, whatever you wanna call it, on Thursday. And so Dr. Coto got to experience his first weather calling day, it was really, really, uh, anxiety filled for him. But based on the feedback that we collected, everyone was really appreciative of it. There's things that we can do to be better and we'll continue to look at those, uh, and make those things better. But we always look for folks to join us in this work, so if anybody ever wants to work during the break, you know, reach out to us, we have opportunities. Uh, but, you know, the thing for me is we grew this from literally 60 kids the year before to 350 kids this year. So, um, that's significant. And again, I credit Dr. Coto, uh, Ms. Miranda, and the team who, uh, pound the pavement, got kids registered. We had over 600 kids registered, but only 350 showed up, uh, about every day. Um, so again, I wanna thank those people who gave up their break to be with our kids and like one of the speakers said, we provided a warm place to be, a meal for breakfast, lunch, and, and lessen the burden on some of our families with childcare when they have to still work during that, that break. Tomorrow is Read Across America Day, which is all about highlighting and getting kids excited about reading. I know our very own Mr. DiCaprio and our deputy superintendent are going over to, um, Van Corleere to do some reading tomorrow. Um, we have an array of readers and activities taking place across the district, so stay tuned for that. Uh, this month is obviously is also Women's History Month, today's the start of Women's History Month, um, or some people may say it's the Irish month, right? Cause it's green every day till St. Patty's Day. Um, but we will be doing some things to highlight and recognize women who have fought tirelessly and courageously for equality, justice, and opportunity to advance the rights and opportunities for not only women but also young girls. The Future Chef Competition is gonna be held on March 10th from 4 to 7 at Schenectady High School. This is a cooking competition in which elementary students, uh, create their own culinary creations. It was, it was a lot of fun last year, if you didn't know, we did this last year. We will be livestreaming, or some of it will be livestreamed. I'll be in attendance, I think I'm one of the judges, and we'll be sharing some of the highlights of that event. Two more things before I shift over to the update. Um, March 8th, obviously there's no school for the district. Uh, you saw that earlier today, there was a performance on, uh, uh, the Holy Holiday or Fa- Fagwa, I believe is how it's pronounced, or Pagwa? Yeah, thank you. Simone's my, she keeps me in check. Um, Pagwa and, um, you know, we're all learning about it. And so it's been really powerful for me to, to be in a community where, um, we've been, uh, inclusive enough to recognize this in our school calendar. The board has supported that. And so although it's a day off, it's also a day for folks to learn more about the Hindu holiday and what that celebration looks like for our kids and our community. Uh, our hope is that our teachers spend some time, um, I know last year, to see kids in color and walking around the building and our staff here at Mount Pleasant in particular creating an opportunity for them to celebrate. So it was fantastic. And I do wanna recognize the board for allowing that to be on our district calendar. That's important because it does impact our ability to have snow days and things of that nature, but it also shows that we take our diversity, equity, inclusion policy, uh, significantly serious and we're gonna be bringing a calendar to before the board, uh, next, for next year, that will also continue to recognize this as part of our, as part of our holiday. And, you know, one thing that I will say regarding it is that, you know, I've gotten questions from folks like, "Are we really off?" And then, and, and I've told folks, "Yeah, we're really off. We're treating it just like we would any, any other holiday, give it the respect, uh, that it deserves." And so, um, you know, I just wanna make sure we uplift that. Uh, final update for the board is obviously we rolled out the Schenectady Revitalization Plan 2030 and we've been doing a little bit of homework. Next slide, Brian. And one of the things I had asked the board was for permission to pursue a location, um, or a facility that would allow us to create a family and community engagement center. Uh, again, a, a facility that would focus on, um, uh, you know, we have to give our families a good experience when they first interact with us. Right now, our experience is the behind Mount Pleasant, ground level floor, you know, the red awning. And, um, you know, again, I, I understand why things were done in the past, but I think if we have the opportunity to elevate that experience, I think we should. And so we have been looking for a place that would allow us to have central student registration, a district parent center where they would have access to technology. We would be able to host trainings that wouldn't impact the school building, uh, that would be able to run during the day, uh, also, uh, into the evenings and with weekends without burdening, uh, one of our schools, cause our schools are moving to community schools and they're doing other programming as well. Um, we also would wanna bake it a, a place where there's, transportation can get changed or if there's questions on transportation. If anybody wanted to get on boarded and be a part of the district and work for the district, that Human Resources could be located there, uh, that we could have special education resources for families there, we could hold CSC meetings there, uh, and more, and more. These are just things that I listed quickly, but, uh, so we've been looking for a place and I asked for permission, the board gave me permission to look for a place. And so, um, next slide, Brian. Um, we, we've identified, I believe, a potential location that puts us, uh, eh, you know, as part of the downtown revitalization work. And, um, it was formerly, I mean, from my understanding, everybody went here, cause Ortho New York was here, so like, everybody had an appointment there. Um, so it may not be unfamiliar with you, the location, but it's, um, on Liberty Street and, and what excites me, it's that, it's across the street from the library, public libraries there. It's a block away from, uh, City Hall. And for our parents, it's on public transportation if they need public transportation. But look at that parking lot that we could offer folks. If you tried to park here, it is extremely hard. We have, we have staff from Mount Pleasant that parks here, we have district staff, we, you know, the Boys and Girls Club next door, but it becomes pretty competitive. And again, our first experience is limited, uh, for our families. We've got a really narrow hallway and, um, so our hope is that we would be able to create a warm introduction to the district and it would be a one-stop shop for families. And it would be available for them, not just, uh, during the school days, but we would look to have extended hours and allow folks, right now, when 4 o'clock comes, so everything here closes. And, and, and we know some jobs go later into 4 o'clock and they need to get out at 5 o'clock. And so, you know, working with, uh, the Innovation Equity Engagement Division around parent liaison, parent center there, uh, providing additional customer support. So my ask for the board tonight, um, and we could have discussion if needed, but is to either allow me permission to pursue this, whether it's a purchase or it's a lease. Um, next slide, Brian. So, um, the, so the second thing I wanted to talk to you about was William C. Kane Elementary School. And, um, we had talked about either purchasing or leasing this. Uh, we had met with, um, folks at the diocese to discuss this. Uh, our recommendation to the board will be to lease it for an additional two more years. This will allow us to reassess things along with, uh, starting some of the construction in our Schenectady Revitalization Plan. And the diocese is willing to use those two years of the lease to go to the purchase of the price of the building. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't lose that money, we would be able to use it. Uh, but I think it would be smart for us to pursue the lease because we don't have enough time to really purchase it. But both of these items are gonna require us to put this on the May, um, uh, resolution in May for the community ultimately to vote whether we pursue these two things. We have to do something with Kane irregardless, we have kids there, uh, we have a principal in the audience who's here. Um, but, you know, our, our hope is that, uh, you know, we can get support from our community on moving forward with Kane. And, um, you can give me permission to even consider whether a lease or a purchase on Ortho New York. It's currently vacant, they relocated to another location, I think it's, I wanna say near Proctors or behind, behind Proctors. Yeah, and so, um, and the, the, the nice thing about it, we believe there's li- limited work that needs to get done at, at Ortho New York. It was set up with a reception area and office suites and conference rooms and a conference center. So, uh, next slide, Brian. So, uh, with those two kinda final pieces, just wanna open up to the board, any questions? Uh, we're willing to have a conversation.
Vivian, Prinsella, and then Kathy.
Um, just to confirm so that everyone in the public is aware, if we were to pursue the former Ortho New York building, um, either leasing it or purchasing it, is that going to have a potential impact on the budget?
Yeah, so right now, we believe we can absorb it and, uh, we would build in the cost, uh, of, of what that cost would be. So if we leased it, the lease would have to be, either be a set number of years that we would put it out to the community to vote and then it would have a cost. But we're probably talking like 200 to 300,000 at most, uh, for potentially a lease.
Okay.
Each year.
Each year, I'm sorry, each year, I'm sorry, yeah, each year.
Each year.
Yes.
And you believe that we may be able to absorb that cost?
Yeah, uh, currently under our current, yes, finances. And again, a lease gives us the opportunity that if, let's say there's a bad day and the budget isn't what it is, you are able to walk away from a lease. You would have to have some language around that allows both parties.
Okay. Prinsella?
And then my question was just off of Vivian's, what's the benefit, um, between the lease versus the purchase?
Uh, so we own it and you can do more things, you know. Terry will tell me there's not a benefit because it takes it off the tax rolls, right? It belongs to us. Uh, but, uh, when you own it, you, you, you full, full responsibility of it. Uh, the only reason that I think a lease is more appropriate for us is that if something were to happen physically, then we have to try to sell it and we have to try to get rid of it. And so, um, but I think mathematically, what we were thinking is, uh, we can work that out and figure out what makes the best sense. A purchase price is a lot larger than a lease price, so that's why I just wanna make sure, like, a purchase price for a building like that's probably like 2.9 million dollars.
Is that owned by Ortho New York? Is that?
I believe it has a private owner. It's a, has a private owner. Right, Terry, private owner? Yeah, it's a private owner.
Okay.
And we have been discussing this with our partners over at Metroplex, they have helped us identify some stuff, so they were gonna assist us. Yeah, yeah. Everybody knows, right?
Is there a certain timeline that we have to operate within in order to potentially secure this building before it goes to another purchaser?
Uh, well, they would like to know if we're serious about it because they will try to protect the opportunity there, but we have to technically go for a May vote, uh, Terry, correct? So this would have to go to the community to ultimately vote. I just need the board's approval to say, "Go ahead and put this on as an item for the vote that night," along with our revitalization plan, but this would be a separate item to lead a lease, uh, to create it.
Okay, so I do have a question about the lease. Is it a yearly lease or is it a three-year lease? Do we know how many years?
Yep, so we would go out to typically probably like either five or 10 or 15. Again, whatever we structure the agreement.
Okay.
Uh, we would have to structure it and we'd have to obviously negotiate with them, uh, what we would be, but, uh, I would imagine we would do something like probably 10 years for X amount of dollars, the lease. But again, we would build protection for both sides so we, they don't get harmed, we don't get harmed. You know, so I'll give you, I'm gonna just pick on Kane. Right now, if something happened and we couldn't be at Kane, there's protections for both sides to walk away with no harm, you just have to give certain notice, certain window of notice. You just have to give certain notice, certain window of notice as part of that procedure. So we would do the same thing here.
Okay.
And then the, if we were to purchase it, it'd be a kind of a different point. But the voters would be voting on the purchase of a building and a large tag versus a lease.
Okay. And with the Ortho building, would it be similar to Kane? So let's say that we lock in a lease for 10 years. Would they use that accumulation of money that we paid over the 10 years?
We could negotiate that, but we did not. We did not. We just, we just toured it and just talked in general terms.
Okay. And then I'm just curious, the utilities, do we know?
We asked for them. They're going to send us to them.
Okay, okay.
We didn't get those yet, right, Terry? We can get that.
Okay. And we're responsible for all the utilities?
Yeah, they would be the landlord. We pay the utilities, but if something broke, they would be responsible for fixing anything that broke. But we would be responsible for the monthly.
Okay. And then the removal of snow?
That's something typically that would be negotiated as well.
Negotiate, okay.
But we also have trucks and our team can remove snow.
We have.
The audience, yes. Yeah, no, we, we would staff everything. We would, we would have a daytime staff and we'd have safety staff. We would have a parent liaison, you know, stationed there. You know, we would treat it as if it's our facility.
Okay.
But they, but the removal piece, we, we haven't really, we didn't get into the weeds of those things. But I, I need permission to either get into the weeds of those things and then bring back something that we would put out to the voters.
Okay.
But the, but the reality, what we saw was a couple of things. And so we saw an opportunity for us to be a part of the, the work being done, not only in downtown, but also more closer one-stop shop for our families. So if they go pay a bill at City Hall, they can also stop by the school system if they needed to. If they register, you know, it's just a, just a better place to enter into the system. And if they need access to resources, you know, again, my vision would be that we'd have some computers there if somebody wanted to search the internet. And again, we're across the street from the public library. So I could also see some increased partnership opportunities with the library.
And I'm assuming because it was an organization, Ortho, that is accessible to folks.
Yeah, handicap accessible, ramps, multiple entrances in, secure vestibules, all those things that you would expect.
I think one of the things, I think the parking lot is now partially used by Destine. So we'd have to.
Yeah, yeah. They told us it was used by apartments, some apartment folks that they owned, that they were just allowing to use until an owner was.
I know they had a parking problem down there and bus transport. So I, I thought that Ortho was part of that solution.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I know that when we mentioned the parking lot, they, because there were people parked. And they had said that there's some apartments that they, that they own, that they have allowed to use it. But if there was an owner there, then they would.
It is right across from them.
And there is two poles or you could put a gate up if needed to protect the parking.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
One last question for myself. I know that when you typically move to purchase a building, that a full inspection, a structural inspection has to be done. If we were to lease the building, would that same process be followed?
Yeah, we, we would have to go through, we have to go through all kinds of architectural stuff. Again, make sure it passes inspection. We would, we would follow all that because that would break the deal if it didn't pass certain things. So we would do our diligence on our side, check the title and all that stuff. If we were buying it, we would do all the, the work that's required before an official deal would, would be there. But we haven't engaged any of that yet because I just need to make sure that the board understood the vision, either supports the vision and then we'll proceed and we'll move forward and get some of those details and we can come back. And again, the goal would be we would put this on for vote, public vote in May.
So board, do we feel okay for him to continue to explore?
Yes.
I support it. So yes.
Okay, great. And then the Kane piece, I just, my recommendation to the board is we'll go back out for a two-year lease. And I just want to make sure that, we have to put that out for public vote as well because the, the last time we did it, it's expired.
How long ago was that?
I think it was like six years, Terry, right? Six years ago, five years ago, the original agreement for Kane?
I was going to say, I don't recall it in my time.
It was a yearly, like you can renew it yearly for up to 15 years, I think is what the agreement was.
Okay, that's, that's why I don't recall it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Can't, can't ruin the funding piece until we got the permission. So one thing that we'll, we'll mention is that Andrea's, Andrea's division has some grant funding to create community engagement space. Grant funding. So that will, that's why we believe we'll be able to offset some of the costs with the grant.
Any other questions? Thank you, Superintendent Solen. We're going to transition to our district clerk, Martha Morris.
Hi, this year's annual budget vote and board member election and any other referendums we might have will be held on Tuesday, May 16th. Throughout the state, budget votes and elections always take place on the third Tuesday in May. We have three board positions up for election this year. If you are interested in running for the board, I have petitions with me here tonight. See me after the conclusion of this meeting. They are also available on our website under how to run for a seat on the Board of Education. There is also a link to a publication outlining what prospective school board members should know. Or you can email me at morrism@schenectadyschool.org or call me at 518-370-8100, extension 36905. And again, all of that information is on our website.
Thank you, DC Morris. And now we will not today share board comments tonight to allow time to work on the board goals. Thank you, board members, for moving forward with this important work. So now we will transition to our third goal, BOE goal setting, excuse me. Reminder, we decided to pause on the board goals discussion on February 2nd. Does everyone remember that? Okay, so we will continue from there, but I just want to remind everyone, we will engage in a systemic structure that ensures transparency and inclusivity of all members of the board. Our goals are board's internal guideposts. This is our third discussion and we will continue these conversations at every meeting until we have completed our charge and hopefully that charge will be completed tonight. The anticipated date or the latest date, we're hoping to complete this is in April. Just a reminder, we have the superintendent goals on page two. And if you need a copy, just let me know, but it's also on board docs. Is everyone okay? Okay. And the vision, goals and slogan, organizational values and pillars of Schenectady City School District is on page three as a reference when we discuss our goals. Let's keep in mind that we want our goals to align with all of the above while not overstepping our role as board members. Okay. Before I continue, I just want to remind everyone of our agreements for meetings. And if you need one, I can pass one down. But again, we agree to maintain a focus on what's best for our students. One mic, one voice. Ensure a safe space for all views to be expressed, treating each other and staff respectfully. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening and considering with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view even if one disagrees. We all agree? So originally, and I'm just going to go right now to the, the board goals. When we last met, there were two outstanding questions that we talked about quite, but quite a bit. One was around the word retreat. And the other one was around, and this one was in November, when we first talked about, and actually I'm going to rewind back to the first board goal, which is fiscal responsibility. We did agree with the, with that narrative that we have under fiscal responsibility. And again, I just want to remind everyone. But we had some discussions about the first sentence. It originally said develop a board goal. Do you remember that? Develop a budget that provides. And then at the last meeting in January, I did provide education law that stated in that law that the board is charged to formulate a budget, which is similar to develop. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because we had quite a bit of conversation the first time around. Develop versus, well, we don't develop it, we adopt it. So I just want to make sure with number one, just revisiting because there were a lot, there was a lot of conversation around that. And now you have education law. Do we want to change that narrative that we have, that description under fiscal responsibility? Or are we okay? And I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at it again.
So per education law, we are supposed to.
Under educational law, it does state that we, and I have it here. It does state that the, okay, so this is educational law 19.1. Who is responsible for formulating a district, a school district's budget? The school boards are responsible for formulating and adopting a proposed budget for their school district for the upcoming year. They then present their proposed budget to the district's voters for approval at their annual meeting. And then it has all the sections. If the voters refuse to approve the proposed budget, a school board must adopt a contingency plan and it has more information there. But it was really the first part. School boards are responsible for formulating and adopting a proposed budget for the school. The way that NISBA wrote it in their handbook, they wrote, develop a budget that provides, dot, 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 dot. So it's not that we have to have it exactly like it's here, but I just wanted to bring it up just to honor some of the people who had questioned that, that statement at the top.
Well, in my personal opinion, formulating and adopting a budget is much different than reviewing and requesting changes to a budget. As far as I'm concerned, I don't know if anyone else sees differently. But I feel like if we're going to move to be as accurate as possible once I did the board goals, then I think that the language should be changed.
Thank you, Vivian. Any other thoughts?
So I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page because I, I think we got this from the second session, right? So we're changing the adoption piece. Instead of saying that we adopt the budget.
I think even the review and request necessary to adopt, we could use the language. I mean, it's up to the board, but we can use the language that's specifically in the law. So let's say school boards are responsible for formulating and adopting, because it does say adopting here. Adopting a budget that provides academic resource and then we can keep the rest.
I like that. I like that. That's aligned, I think.
Are you okay with it, Kathy? So, so school boards are respons, so this is exactly from ed law. School boards are responsible for formulating and adopting. Now I'm going to our board goals. Adopting a budget that provides academic resource, supports, et cetera, et cetera.
That's aligned with, yeah.
Okay.
So you're taking out formulating?
No, so we're taking out review. So.
No, I see you're taking out review and request changes. You're, are you substituting formulating in there?
Yes. So I'm going to take the language from ed law that says school boards are responsible for reformulating and adopting, and then the rest of what we have there.
I, I honestly would question whether we have the ability to formulate the budget. That's where the request and review and request changes comes from. We do not get down into the nitty-gritty of our budget.
I mean, that's what it says in ed law.
But I think it's kind of generic. So, you know, the superintendent and the staff actually develop the budget, you know, but, but whatever.
Well, it does say later on. So read the whole thing. School boards are responsible for formulating and adopting a proposed budget for their school district for the upcoming year, dot, 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 dot. Generally, the school superintendent and school business official put together a draft budget that helps frame the, the board's discussion during this formulation and adoption of the proposed school budget.
I think that's the key part.
So how does that change?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I just want to understand. So Kathy, when you say that we don't formulate and adopt the budget.
You know, I, no, we do adopt, but I, but I think what we had here, review and requesting changes, that's to the draft budget that has been developed by the superintendent per that third line or second line of your, what Bernice just read. And that allows us to adopt that budget. But, you know, I think we're into semantics at this point. So if you want to put formulate and adopt, fine.
So then I think the question, the begs the question of whether or not the board is required to form the budget? Or can the board formulate the budget? But it's general practice that the superintendent forms, creates a framework for the budget for the board to then review and discuss and request changes as necessary.
I would say it's both, based on what's here. Let me read it one more time. School boards are responsible for formulating and adopting a proposed budget for their school district for the upcoming school year. They then present their proposed budget to the district voters for approval at their annual meeting. And there's a lot of sections after that. If the voters refuse to approve the proposed budget, a school board must adopt a contingency budget. Generally, the school superintendent and school business official put together a draft budget that helps frame the board's discussions during its formulation and adoption of the proposed school budget. So let's see, what if we? Or we can do this. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, obviously, you know, what ed law says. But to Kathy's point, and I've only been on the board a year, it's like my second year. Like last year, what we did was we reviewed and requested changes and then we adopted. You know what I'm saying? So like, I guess I'm kind of with Kathy. Like we're, I haven't formulated anything and I don't have the skills to do so. So like, that's just, because we, you know, to get, we don't do that.
Okay. So what do we think? What do we want to do?
I would leave it. Review and request changes necessary to adopt a budget because we had already debated that.
So can we do this? Compromise, review and request changes necessary to formulate and adopt a budget that provides?
If you say it again, sorry.
Yeah. So review and request changes necessary to formulate and adopt a budget that provides, dot, 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 dot.
Boom. Compromise. You're going to say Bernice. Good job.
So, okay, so it is going to say, review and request changes necessary to formulate and adopt a budget that provides. And then, okay, we're all okay?
Yep.
Okay. To formulate. Okay. And then if we would like to take a minute to take a look at the four activities, I think we were okay with all of them, but if you can take a look at the first, the four activities under fiscal responsibility. I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at that.
For number four, is that going to be every budget year, we're going to do that?
We hope to.
So, so we put that in there?
So for number three or four, schedule two professional development sessions for. What is every one thing? So schedule, say that again.
I'd just say, is it every year? So it's sort of open and vague.
Okay. So like take the two out of there? Is that what you're?
No, no, she's saying, will that be every year or will it be?
Like our, this document is just year to year. So it's just a working document for a year. So, I don't know.
So it's implied?
Yeah, because, yeah. Do we need to make it more specific against time?
And then, I don't know if you, at number two, there were questions around that one. Okay. There were questions around that one.
But go ahead, Nalani.
No, 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 no. I, I was just saying, I, I wanted to make sure we circled back to it. Because it is different from what we had originally. So I don't know how, if we decided on that. Like what does that look like as far as opening that up to the community, for their participation in the, in the budget outside of like the session that we have where they come, yeah, to speak?
I think so, piggybacking off that. So for number two, we might be able to use full sentences one day today. Kind of address that instead of using the word work with, instead of to collaborate with the superintendent. So it leaves it a little more open-ended in how we're going to achieve that.
So to collaborate with the superintendent and their staff?
Right, yeah.
Okay. And their staff or and staff? To collaborate with the superintendent?
Yeah, there's. Because it's not ours.
To collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide different opportunities for the community to participate in budget forums?
Like what are the? Do we want to say provide different or just provide opportunities?
Provide.
Like do we need different? I don't know.
Just, yeah, provide opportunities. But do we want to be specific to what those opportunities are?
Well, I think that's probably where collaborate, that's why I said the collaborate, because we don't. Right? And that's, we're not going to get off goal number one.
You could say, you could say to provide different ways for the community to participate in budget formulation.
For the community.
So I think that is.
In the formulation of the budget.
To figure out what it's going to be.
Because that's where, that's where it could occur.
So two different ways?
I just, I like different ways. I don't, I don't like that.
I don't know if it's different means, different methods, different opportunities. I just don't know. I know it's semantics, but I just don't like it.
Ways, different ways.
Which, which word?
Oh, Vivian, can you say that? So I don't think they heard it on the other side.
Like different.
Like, different means for the community to get involved, or--
Yeah, I had said ways, I had said ways, so, yeah.
Where are you?
Number two, under one--
Why doesn't it say ways?
No, I had, I had said that, suggested that, ways. As opposed to opportunities. To provide different ways for the community--
Methods is one. To provide different methods for the community.
Okay, so what, okay, so let's, so collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide different methods or ways for the community to participate in budget forums?
I, 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 I had suggested instead of budget forums, because that is a particular style of how it might be done. I would say different ways for the community to participate in the formulation of the budget. And that could be, you know, written, it could be, you know, it could be in those workshops that we had done at one time, whatever.
Okay, so here are a few, okay. So this one was what Erica suggested at first. To collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide opportunities for the community to participate, and now I'm gonna add what Kathy just said, participate in the formulation of the budget. That's one. To collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide different ways for the community-- Thank you-- to participate in the formulation of the budget. That was two. Then the other one was to collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide, and this is Vivian's suggestion, different methods for the community to participate. Are we okay with the formulation of the budget?
At that least, I'm fine with that.
I don't think we're to collaborate, I think it's just a--
Okay, okay, perfect.
Various methods, or various means of--
Various? Okay. So, are, are we all okay with to collaborate with the superintendent? Let's take a piece back here. Okay, yes, all right. Okay, so to collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide, we're good there. So now, it's either--
Various means, ways, or methods, or opportunities.
Various means?
Various methods, I know.
Okay, so to collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide various means? To collaborate with the superintendent and the staff to provide opportunities for the community to participate in the formulation of the budget?
Wait, I thought that was coming out to provide different opportunities was being substituted by, and their staff to provide various means for the community to participate in the formulation.
That's what I'm wondering, which one do we like? Which one, huh?
Isn't that the same, or is this semantics now?
Yeah, it is, it is.
So opportunities sound better to me than various means.
Okay, and what about--
I'm good with it, I think, you were good with opportunities too, right? I mean, I think we all were--
Okay.
Okay with that originally.
Okay, so, so what about this then? To collaborate with the superintendent and their staff to provide opportunities for the community to participate in the formulation of the budget? Okay, that's two, Nahalani, Erica?
Yeah.
Vivian?
You looked at me and said Vivian.
No, no, Vivian, I heard Vivian, no. Yeah, you're good. Are you okay with that, Kathy?
Sure.
Okay, yes, all right. Okay, so then number one, we are all done. Okay? So number two, governance, and this one too, we stopped actually at number two. So we were okay with the description under governance. We were okay with activities one and two. So I'll give you a few minutes to revisit that.
So I already see, oh, okay, so number one, the board retreat versus--
Oh, yeah, that's what, yes, thank you, thank you. So at the last meeting, we had, this was in January, and then I mentioned it briefly at the last board meeting, that there were some good conversations about retreat versus professional development. I did check with NISBA around that, and just, this is a quick reminder, I won't get into that because I did talk about it a little bit before, and they said that we could use the word professional development, but there were some concerns around that. There was one, you know, a few folks that were saying retreat may not resonate with our community that well, that it may be misconstrued, and then other folks saying, well, retreat is like going away for days, right? And then, a couple of--
I had also talked with the lawyer at NISBA, and, and it was suggested that we could use professional development delivered in a retreat setting.
We don't go away, we're not escaping, there's something difficult, dangerous, it's disagreeable.
So, I mean, we could, for example, let's say that we want to call it, I know there was a suggestion, board governance, professional development retreat, or let's say board governance, professional development program. Again, it's, you know, it's up to the board to decide what they want to use, but I know, how do we feel about retreat, go ahead.
I, I think that calling it professional development, that's what it is, that's what we're there for. I do think that there is this misconception or idea when you use the word retreat, that it's something, and I don't mean this in the, in the wrong way, pleasurable, like you're going away and what have you. It's, it's, it's board development, we're getting together, we're, we're learning governance and how we work. So I, I think it makes sense to call it that. That's just my personal opinion, but--
I'm in agreement with--
I think the word--
I'm also in agreement, oh, okay, let's, Kathy and then Erica?
I, I, I think the word retreat in the educational sense goes to the open meetings law concern about the not having to be in public. That's, that's the idea. Now, I mean, I don't mind if you don't use retreat, but that's why it was suggested that perhaps delivered in a retreat setting would be, would be, would be a, a way of accommodating that because, because our retreats, we don't, are not usually subject to the open meeting law, and that's what we would prefer not to be the case, so.
Yeah, correct. I mean, even, when I checked with NISBA though, they said since, whatever we call it, whether it's a retreat or professional development program, we are not voting or making any decisions which, which, which would then require it to be, to meet the open meetings law, but otherwise, we could use professional development.
It sounds more professional to say professional development. It's, we're doing something task-oriented, we're not like waiting for a massage or anything. We're actually--
And you can just, you know, for work retreats, usually it's more based on team building or outbuilding, and--
Right.
I'd love to go on a retreat with y'all to do that, but when we do, it's really for the professional developer, learning about governance, or learning about the budget formulation, things like that.
No, I agree, I just personally feel like there's nothing about the retreats that scream retreat, it's professional development.
Okay, so what if we, so actually, let me ask you all, what would you like to call it? So board professional development program, or board professional, or governance? Just so that, I'll throw it out to all of you.
Professional development.
Board professional development?
Call it that, let's get it done.
I think it's straightforward.
I know, yeah, here too, over there, professional development. Board professional development?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, schedule two, board, yeah, schedule two, board professional development for the purpose of developing a strong governance and everything else we're okay with?
Do you want to specify the number, or just say--
Schedule.
Because, because, I mean, at one point, we just basically did one, you know, if depended on the length of the day, that kind of thing, so. Maybe that's too specific. A minimum of one? Yeah, a minimum of one, at least one.
Well, we're, yeah, we, we do have the number there, it says schedule two, so we schedule a minimum of two.
And she's suggesting that perhaps we shouldn't have a number there?
Okay, oh, I thought she said should we have a number there?
No, no, I--
So do we want to just say schedule?
I feel like the number holds us accountable to doing--
Schedule one professional development session for the purpose of, or at least one. Schedule at least one.
At least one.
On this one?
Well, whatever.
A, a lot of boards don't do them at all, so that's why we're suggesting that we do it, I think.
Yeah, it's very important. Know what I'm saying, for some that don't.
They don't want to pay for it.
Well, I mean, maybe this goes back to kind of what Erica said too with the other one, that we do look at this on an annual basis, so if it needs to be changed, we can just change it. But at least this year, we had two. Are we okay with that then?
Yes.
Okay. So schedule two, board professional development, I was about to say retreat, for the purpose of developing, okay. So we're, is everyone okay with number one?
Yes.
Okay, number two, and that one's just revisiting. And this, just to remind everyone, because actually it was Vivian who was sharing, like, onboarding and orientation are very different, so that's when we included both.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we okay with number two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's take a look at number three. How do we feel about number three? Okay. Vivian?
I don't hate it.
You don't need it at all?
I don't hate it.
Oh, okay, you're, Kathy, are you? Okay, so we're done with governance, okay?
No, you got four, five, and six.
Oh, four. You have to turn the page. Okay, number four, so take a few minutes to look at number four. Thank you, Kathy, I was getting ahead of myself.
I think you want an and.
Where, I know it seems--
After meetings and submitting resolutions.
Meeting and--
Participating in annual business meetings and submitting resolutions to NISBA.
Yep.
And need arises.
Okay. So advocate for fairness, equity, and funding for Schenectady and for all youth in New York State by participating and engaging in conversations and taking action with legislatures. Participating in NISBA annual business meetings and submitting resolutions to NISBA if the need arises.
Are you saying legislators, meaning the persons, or legislatures, meaning more than one legislative body? Because the legislature is, is both the assembly and the senate.
What you first said, legislators.
Legislators, right?
Yes, yep.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Are we okay with number four?
Yes.
Yes.
Princilla, I saw your head, Nahalani. It's a lot of words, right?
It's a lot of words, I'm just looking at the annual business meetings and, and thinking back over my tenure as a, as a board member.
Okay.
Like, I know we've met with legislators. Is the annual business meeting for, like, board presidents, VPs? Is it where it's open to everyone?
It's open to everyone, it's just, yeah, there's one, I'm sorry, there's one person that is designated the board person from Schenectady, let's say, that can interact vocally at the meeting.
Voting delegate, yeah.
Yeah, voting delegate, but then, eh, thank you, and then, but all of us can participate and, or participate in the sense that we're able to watch what happens at the meeting. You can log in and watch, it was a virtual--
Sorry, okay, so I think I'm looking at these as two separate things, got it? So the annual business meeting is where the submission of resolution six plays, the stuff that we all look at, got it?
Correct.
Got it, okay, I'm good.
Okay. And then Kathy, are you okay with this one? Okay, all right, so advocate for fairness, equity, and funding for Schenectady and for all youth in New York State by participating, engaging in conversations, and taking action with legislators, participating in NISBA annual business meetings, and, and that's where, that's why Kathy said the and, and submitting resolutions to NISBA if the need arises. We're good with number four. Number five, I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at that, and I just crossed out retreat from that one, number four. How do we feel about number five, taking out retreats?
I agree with that, it's just slightly redundant.
Yep.
I mean, we're talking about scheduling the two board professional developments, the training process, you know.
Do you suggest maybe we take number five out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kathy, Princilla, Vivian, what do you feel? Yep, okay. Are you okay with that too, Kathy?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so then number six, so we're taking five out. Number six, appoint or elect a student board representative to bring voice and leadership to our board meetings. That's something that Superintendent Soler has talked with us about having a student representative, so we didn't have it this year, but we're hoping next year, okay?
You should know that that will have to go to vote in May as well.
Yes, thank you, Martha.
Like, what is, what do you mean?
And there will be a referendum in May with the, all of the other referendums we've talked about and the budget, to, to include a student representative on board.
But now, that isn't, but that's not a voting person, right? I mean, because I've never heard of having to do the--
I'm pretty sure that--
To do the, to do a vote, I, I think, to have them on, you know, I mean, because they're not a voting member.
Right. Well, I'll accept that, but I was under the impression that that's the way it's supposed to be.
Thanks, Martha.
That's the first time I've ever heard that, so I just wondered about that.
Well, great, Martha, when you know, just let us know, thank you, thank you for sharing.
Some people have more than one student as well, so that's why I, I, because they'll have a representative, maybe from the middle schools, one from the high school. One that, you know, might represent the elementary schools, but probably not an elementary school student, you know, that kind of thing, so.
So are we okay, though, with number six, which will be number five? Yes.
Or would you rather just emphasize the student voice as opposed to exactly how it's going to be accomplished?
Oh, so just elect a stu-, or, elect a student, well, not even elect, you're saying have, or--
Encourage student voice in meetings or board meetings or something like that, and however that might be done, I, you know, without--
But I think if we're making a commitment to have a student board representative--
Because they'll actually be sitting with us.
Being specific is, again, the accountability part, that's a point of the goals.
Are we okay with--
Just to clarify, one piece on, so I just looked it up. Boards that decide to include a student member are legally required to appoint a student, but they, they aren't voting members, but you're still required to have it publicly voted. So Martha was correct.
They will provide input.
Correct, right, right. So just, so just to know that that'll be, if that's what the board wants to do, we'll put it on--
Is it on the referendum, is it like the specific student, or is it just saying--
No, it just says to allow the student to have a board representation.
Thank you.
So if we want it more than one, if we want it more than one student, would we have to put that on the referendum?
Yeah, so you could, you could do that, and then if you wanted like two students or one from the junior high, you can make it as specific as you want, or it's not, but the, the point is, the student is not allowed to attend executive sessions and they cannot vote, but voicing an opinion in any topic being discussed at the board table is why you would vote them to have that ability.
I love it. That's, that's awesome, okay. So then we are okay with the language as is?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we're good, we're at number three, everyone. Okay, so it's, we agreed on the title, on the title, I guess, excellence in student learning and support equity, so I'll give everyone a few minutes to take a look at the narrative underneath that and the activities, okay?
So my first comment is in the explanation. Where it says overcome structural barriers, can we just say barriers, because are there other types of barriers besides structural?
Okay. Continue to identify support ways to overcome structural inequities. No. Do you have a?
I mean, just be generic, I mean to say barriers instead of putting.
Oh, structural?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're, so continue to identify and support ways to overcome barriers to equity, you're suggesting.
I have a stupid question. Barriers to equity in what specifically?
It could be a variety of things, it could be in resources, right? So one school may, this is hypothetical, right? But one school, let's say, well, and it's not hypothetical, some school, one school, let's say, gets more, has more resources than the other school. Because, let's say, and I'm making this up, let's say the year prior that school, in terms of data and in terms of the rest, or the test scores, they needed certain resources that another school didn't need. But let's say another year, another school needed something, but they didn't receive it on a timely basis, I'm making all of this up, but in equity, that's one example about equity. Or let's say that one school has a variety of books that school, that students can use at their level, but in another school, they don't have those leveled reading books, for example.
So how do you feel about maybe rephrasing this a little bit? Barriers to equitable access to X, Y, and Z. Equitable access to education resources, whatever we want to call it, or would you feel like that would be too redundant?
What does the board think?
Say it in a full sentence.
I don't know. I mean, my first.
I need to know what the other, I'm sorry.
Vivian, yeah, my first thought is that then, this is, that the list can be extensive. If we were to itemize everything, because there's so many things that can go under equity, and it could change from year to year.
Okay.
You know, so.
Fair point.
Okay.
Fair point.
But I, what do others think?
No, I agree, I think I, I wanted to hear all of the items, and, and I, I agree with you, I think it would get very long if we tried to do it that way, so.
And even too Vivian, when I'm thinking of this, I'm thinking of even of our code of, our code of character. You know, that we have a code of character or conduct that really is looking at things in an equitable way, in terms of how we discipline our students and what are our procedures. So, you know, I mean, and that aligns with the policies piece there, so continue to, and that just goes to your question of like what? Yeah, continue to identify, support ways to overcome barriers to equity that exists in our district, and develop policies and procedures that advance learning and equity. Even though we have equity there twice.
We have it twice.
I know. What are thoughts, any other thoughts, advance? Take, maybe if we were, continue to identify and support ways to overcome barriers to equity that exists in our district and develop policies and procedures that advance learning.
There you go. Yeah.
We're okay with that? Okay. So let's take a look at number one. Our first activity. Provide every school with, so the board will provide every school with the resource needed to maximize and enrich our students' educational and social experience, so that all students have an opportunity to graduate college and career ready.
And are career ready?
And are, an opportunity, wait, say that again? To have an opportunity to graduate college and are.
Career ready.
A R E, are.
It says, it's, so it reads to graduate college and career ready, because if you say, and correct me, because I'm tired.
Oh, college and career ready?
And are career ready, and you're insinuating that they're not going to be career ready to graduate college.
Okay.
I would like to see something that says. Within certain constraints or to the best of our ability. Because we don't always have limitless resources that we can provide to. To make sure all, all, everything is accommodated in every school.
Yep.
I mean, particularly as I recall, gap elimination adjustments and things like that, so it's just, so when we say will, that sounds too dramatic, I mean, you know.
What if?
To the best of our ability.
Yeah.
We, we will do this, but.
Would, would you be okay Kathy, if we said something like the board will advocate for every school?
Well, I think we had the advocate aspect up in, under governance, number four. Advocate for fairness, equity, and funding.
Okay.
So. I, I mean, and our aim would be to try to do this, but it's, it's constrained by certain.
Yeah.
Boundaries.
Outside.
Certain, certain limitations we have, so.
So what was your suggestion?
I, I, I would say to the best of our ability, the board will. Will do whatever.
Okay. Yeah, okay, yeah. The board will, to the best of their ability. Provide. So what if the board will, to the best of their ability, provide every school, I'm just trying to keep the, the board will, just because it's been on all the other ones, but the board will, to the best of their ability, provide every school with the resources, da, 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 da?
Fine.
Any?
Okay, so.
It sounds like we're not trying, like it's, like it's an opportunity to not be the best year, like, we don't feel like it this year, so.
What about providing every school with? What about providing every school with the available resources?
The board will provide every school.
Because that's kind of going to that girl part, because it's like, well, it's not available, so you can't get it, like, it's not kind of free down the bar, it's a matter, it's eight o'clock, yeah, my bad.
So, okay.
Can we come back to that one?
Okay. Okay, we're going to table number one for now, and we'll come back, okay? Okay, so number two. Develop and, develop policies to encourage equity practices around teaching and learning, school culture, and climate, including reduction and suspension, efficiency, hiring practice, and retention. Some of that information or that language is from Superintendent Soler's.
Yeah. Goals.
Okay, are we okay with number two?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, sure.
So when I read it, I underline these, it says including reduction and suspension, which I fully understand, but are we reducing hiring practices? Like, it sounds like it's just continued on. Reduction, efficiency, I'm like, no, we don't want to reduce.
We don't want to reduce.
Reduction, suspension, efficiency. Yeah.
So like, maybe put that at the end?
Yeah.
At the end, okay.
Including efficiency, hiring practices, and retention, and reduction and suspension.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so develop policies to encourage equity practices around teaching and learning, school culture, and climate, efficiency, hiring practices, retention, and.
Reduction.
And reduction, yep. And reduction in suspension, are we okay with that? We're good. Okay, so we're, we're okay with number two. Number three. Formulate, or do we want to, formulate is what we agreed on, number one, so formulate and adopt a policy to address diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Okay, number, so we're good with number three? Number four, review and monitor equity audits, which we've done, Dr. Chisholm, actually, just to remind everyone. But review and monitor equity audits, as well as engage with leadership to implement strategies for structural improvement that benefit our student learning, growth, and retention.
It's more the interest curriculum though.
Yes.
I mean, it could be the physical, physical plant, you know, the aspect of things.
The physical what?
The physical plant, you know, I mean, whether we have access through ramps and, you know, lowering children into pool, into the pool, you know, the things like, I, I, you know, I'm, once again, just suggesting things, but. An audit would be looking at what your current practices are with regard to many things, many things.
So how would you, what is your suggestion to kind of modify that?
No, I just was going, just with as far as your example, example was concerned, I, I'm, I'm saying it's a broader than, equity, saying equity audits is fine with me, I just.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
It's, it's broader than just the curriculum aspect of it.
Are we okay with number four? Yes. Vivian, are you okay with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Princella, you're okay? All right, so we are, we're going to circle back to one after, let's go down and then come back to number one under three. All right, so number four, we agreed on partnerships and communication with families, community, and staff, I'll give everyone a few minutes to take a look at the description and the activities.
I have a quick question when it's time.
Sure, sure.
For the first sentence, Bernice.
Oh, go ahead, Princella.
The board will promote, or, shouldn't it be and, I mean. That's what I put.
I had that, I even had a good joke to go with it, I was like, it's or, can I be an encourager instead of promoting one or the other?
That was just because I didn't know which word. So, yeah, so, so which one would you prefer?
It could be both.
Oh, okay, so encourage and, oh, okay, okay. All right, so the board will promote and encourage a trusting environment that engages our families, community, and staff to build partnerships that support the vision, district goals, strategic plan, and the college and career readiness of all students. The board believes every attempt should be made to form partnerships among the schools, the staff, the families, and the community. Are we okay with that one? Okay, I saw, okay. Awesome, we're done with that one. Activities, let's start with number one. The board will provide information to constituents at board meetings about the trajectory of the district in a clear and, in clear and transparent ways.
I guess I'm stuck on traject- trajectory. Trajectory? I, I just stuck on that word.
Okay.
I don't know what we're trying to say.
How we're moving forward.
It's the direction, but.
Yeah, the direction of how we're moving forward, but we can change it, if folks want to change it.
Provide information to constituents at board meetings, so constituents are here. And at the board meeting, we're going to be clear and transparent about the.
Direction of the school.
The district. So we're, that's, that's what we're going to, okay. Like, how do we, how do we give that, like, if I was a constituent sitting here? Is the, the conversation that we're having, that's what we're using, not that we're giving them anything different.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's kind of my question, I guess. Because I always go back to one of our professional development things, and I can't remember his name, where he's always like, Sean, the, you know, the board meetings aren't for the public, they're for you guys to get board business done, right? So then looking at this goal, providing information at board meetings, the trajectory, like, is that the appropriate setting to provide? The public with the trajectory of the district, or is there a different mode of transportation? You got your trajectory in my head.
Information.
Yes, you know what I'm trying to say, just go with it.
I, I think it's a combination, right? Because yes, you're correct, I mean, and Sean did say that this is our meeting, our board meeting, but I think that we have a responsibility as elected officials, that we make it clear what we, what our direction is and what our vision is as board members. And even though it's a meeting for us, I think we have to be clear with everyone, everyone, about what types of things or what direction that we feel the district should get, go into. So I think it's a combination of what you're saying, but I do feel that we have a duty to also be very clear and articulate what our thought process is and the decisions that we make, and I think it's a responsibility to let the public know that.
Question. To kind of blend everything in with others were saying.
Perfect.
What about the board will be clear and transparent when providing information to constituents at BOE meetings about, finish the sentence.
Okay, say that, okay, the board will be clear and transparent when? When, yep.
Providing information to constituents at BOE meetings. About the trajectory of the district.
Okay.
I don't know how anyone feels about that, but that's kind of what I kind of mind.
Yeah, the board will be clear and transparent when providing information to constituents at BOE meetings, and then, you want the rest of it? About the trajectory or about the direction of the district, or just leave it as that?
I kind of like this without the, the first part that you said, I don't know, just without the trajectory.
Okay, yeah. Okay. How do I, so the board will be cleared and transparent when providing info to constituents about, at board meetings? And leave it at that?
The, just a feedback from my side, and obviously this is your conversation. You, you really don't have an opportunity to interact with the public in the manner that is written, the way you're writing it. So I just want to be fair to the public, that they would make, there would be an assumption that there would be some interaction. So I just want to be clear that typically, and I think Bernice says it all the time in the comments, the public comment period is something that the board chooses to allow, but it's not a back and forth opportunity, so. Just my suggestion is be careful what you put down here, because then the assumption would be that they, that you're going to be transparent on matters of the board, but some things you can't, personnel items you can never discuss, and they're going to want, people, people are going to want you to discuss those things, and you just couldn't, you just couldn't do that for, you know, litigious reasons and a variety of reasons around personnel. So I just want to be careful that what you, I know the intent is not that, but you want to be transparent, but there's just certain things that people are going to assume, well, wait a minute, your only goal is to be transparent, I want to know about X, but we, we can't respond, you just can't respond, so. I mean, you could decide to, but I just think it would be, you would break decorum and it would be unproductive.
So to piggyback off of what you said Superintendent, it's, we're providing access to information. It's not the back and forth.
Yeah, so, so like, so typically, most of the agenda items on a board are typically business items. So like, they're, like, that's the, the level of transparency. You, you hire me to, to tell the vision, the stories, the things that are going on in the system. Board policy is another thing that you guys would provide transparency, these are the policies for, you know, screening students, the district's credit card policy, you know, things like that. So that would be another level of transparency. I think what I just want to be careful is that people will want to get into like the weeds on certain subjects, and that, that's just not something that, that you could do. Even though you want to be transparent, there's just some, some cases you won't be able to, so I just, I just, my, my only caution for the board is to just be mindful of intent versus impact. Your intent is the one thing, but the impact may be viewed something else differently.
If we were to keep this clause, would you then suggest that we maybe be a little bit more specific about what we're being transparent and clear on? For example, keeping it specific to board goals, the budget, policies and procedures concerning the district, the direction that the district wants to go. Or given the concerns that you just shared, would you feel it might be best for us to take that part out altogether?
No, so I don't, I don't think you need to take, I just want to be clear that you, there's some limitations to your, to transparency, that's all, I just, that to me, and sometimes that frustrates people.
Yeah.
And so that's why, that word's a tough word sometimes, because they're like, well, you're going to be transparent, well, you can't be transparent, you gotta be opaque on certain things, right? Like, unfortunately, it's the way, the way it works. So I, I don't think it necessarily needs to go away, what I would just say is that the board, maybe you say, through board of education meetings, constituents will find out about district operations, district, you know. Because that's mainly what we do here, you mainly go through policy, financial stuff. You don't really go in, and personnel appointments.
Right.
You don't really get into like, other than these general conversations on goals, you're not really, like, the board doesn't get up and present like, all right, here's what we are, what our goals, this is what we're doing. They really wouldn't do it, it's a practice that you guys do through a self-evaluation or things of that nature. So that, that's kind of my feedback, but I just wanted to provide that.
So I'm wondering if folks can jump to number five then, based on what Superintendent Soler had said, taking out everything after openly. Would we, what do you, and again, listen, hearing what Superintendent Soler. Would we, what do you, and again, listen, hearing what Superintendent Soler said, do we want to maybe take, get rid of number one? And then maybe kind of conduct board business openly, I mean?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, is everyone okay? So we're going to eliminate, thank you Superintendent Soler. We're going to get rid of number one altogether. Thank you, though, for the suggestions, we learned a lot. Alright, and then we're going to replace it with number five, but take away solicit, encourage, da, 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 da. Okay? Yeah, and then maybe even add to Superintendent's point, um, conduct board business openly in accordance with BOE law. Because like you said, there are limitations to what we can discuss publicly.
Okay, and according to ed. law?
Board of Ed.
Board of Ed law, or board, okay, are we okay with that? Erica, we're good?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay, so we're okay with number five, we got rid of number one, let's take a look at number two.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm good.
We're good? We're good with number two? Okay, okay, we're good with number two. Number three. Update board website to provide community, actually, we don't do that, Karen does that.
I can't do a thing with a website.
Yeah, so, um, what it, we can, yeah, we can get rid of that. Yep.
Thank you, Karen.
Alright, yeah, thank you, Karen. Alright, okay, so number four, engage and build relationships with stakeholders at functions, meetings, and schools, and parentheses, um, as a school liaison representative, and events in our communities to act as a link between residents and the superintendent. Number four? We're okay?
And number five, you've already cut down.
Yep, we got it. So let me just revisit number four. Okay, so the only thing we changed for the description is that the board will promote and encourage. And then number two, we left it as is. We got rid of number one, we left two as is. We got rid of number three. Number four, we left it as is, and number five is conduct board business openly and according to board ed. law. Where?
So are we going to do like a reread at the next meeting, or we're done, done?
No, no, I, uh, yeah, we'll do the final one at the next board meeting.
I think this was, um, good practice, because it reinforces what our goals and objectives are as board members. And it allows the community to know what we do, what we can't do, and what we like to do, so.
And I really appreciate everyone involved in this and really getting into this and sharing their feedback, because this is the first time we've done this.
Yeah.
So thank you, everyone, thank you, thank you. And Karen, our director, has a placeholder on the website for the board goals. So once we approve it, we'll send it over, or we'll send it over. Okay, thank you so much, everyone, appreciate, because this is not easy work. So I appreciate all your investment and working on this. This is really important. This is what leads us in our journey to do what's right for our students in our district, so thank you so much. Alright. So now we're going to trans, transition to our consent agenda items. Resolution seven through 10, as itemized on the consent agenda, are presented for approval. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica, second?
Second.
Sorry. Thank you, Vivian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Items removed from the consent agenda. Resolution 11, appointing certain employees tenure. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So we have a walk-in resolution. Resolution 11A requires a waiver of the 48-hour rule with regard to the nomination of a candidate for the election to the Board of the Capital Region Voces. Now, before I read the waiver, John Bergen, we actually voted to. Ber, what is it?
Bergeron.
Bergeron. We actually voted to have him nominated for the Board of the Capital Region Voces. He, um, he decided not to move forward with it, he declined. So, um, may I have a motion to approve the waiver? Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nahalani, second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution 11A nominating a candidate for election to the Board of, of the Capital Region Voces. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Erica, thank you, Nahalani. Mm-hmm, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, um, we have a second opportunity for comments from the public. And board members, I know we didn't have any comments earlier, does anyone have a comment?
I just, I didn't know if we're going the policy thing, the second reading of the policy.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you.
Well, that's actually, it's incorrect here, it's underneath the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
It's out of order on the, it's out of order on the board, but it's under consent items.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
Any comments?
I, I think we should call attention to the upcoming play that they were, our musical that's going to be presented at the high school, the 16th to the 18th of March. It's Little Shop of Horrors, and it's part of the Capital District, efforts that Proctor sponsors for, um, the musical. And that musical, depending on who they select and different things like that, happens, I think it's May 11th or 12th, somewhere in that weekend. So that's the reason for the timing, and I know they've worked on it during the spring, during the winter break, I keep calling it spring. It was warmer then, then it'll probably be in April, but.
Invitations are coming out too, so I know, I saw Leah today.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's the, one of the more significant things, and we have a lot of things in March, but.
Thank you, Kathy, any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to, oh, go ahead.
Just wanted to say thank you for all of the donations, because we had quite a few of them.
Yes.
I think our students are going to be very well prepared with the, uh, the sanit, the wipes. Sanitation wipes, there were a lot of them, um, and former board member, uh, Junior also had, um, something there. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who made donations to the district.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to also just recognize Principal Green, uh, you know, he's obviously here, he's got a tough couple of days coming ahead with the staff and the news from earlier, so I do want to recognize him being here on a long day. And, uh, on behalf of myself and the board, thoughts are with you and your staff and your students. And just please reach out if you need any support, I know that, uh, the Office of Student Support Services is going to be walking side by side with you on this, starting tomorrow, right, Andrew? And so, but we're here and we're thinking of you and the community, so I just want to make sure that we uplift you, uplift you and, and your staff, so.
Any other comments? Okay, so an executive session is now called for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. Motion?
So moved.
Oh, thank you, Kathy, second? Thank you, Nahalani, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
We, we haven't done one here, so.